And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Certainly, Your Honor. Perhaps. Councilmembers Galloway-
Here.
Martin, Piana-
Here.
Lennon, Mayor Coulter-
Here, yes.
We do have quorum.
We do have a quorum. We do have two members out this evening. Next item of business would be the approval of the agenda.
I-
Any changes, additions, corrections to the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Piana, supported by Galloway. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Galloway-
Yes.
Piana-
Yes.
Coulter-
Yes. Thank you. The agenda is adopted. We have three presentations this evening, two on your sheet, and I see our county commissioner here as well. But first, we have the July Beautification Awards, and I see Peggy Snow here to present those. Good evening, Peggy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, everyone at home. We have our three winners for this month. The commercial one is R&amp;S Resale and Estate Services at 3335 Hilton, and it's all cement over there. But I noticed last year that he had put potted plants out on the window ledge and hung some hanging baskets in the trees. So he's done all that he can, you know, and I thought that, we all vote on it, I'm just saying, but I'm the one who mentioned it.
Right.
They don't let me pick on my own, trust me. But anyway, so we picked him for the month because he was-
I would trust you to pick him out.
Well, thank you. But no, they don't. But so he did all that he could over there, taking into consideration all the cement in front and whatever. And then we have one, John Flores and Butch, I'm going to spell his last name, Y-U-H-A-S, and he lives at 311 West Breckenridge, and he's got a nice style house to start with. And unfortunately, he had a tree that came down between the sidewalk and the street, but he's got a nice garden area, and his backyard's beautiful, and he's trying to fix up the area out front right now, but it's just a very nice, neat, tidy house with a lot of great plantings there. And also, by the person who nominated him said that he's been helping a lot of the neighbors with plants in front of, you know, explaining how they should plant in front of their house and helping them, you know, with that and whatever. So that's a good neighbor. Then the next residential is Carolyn Clark at 370 East Woodland, and she's got a beautiful corner lot there, and it looks like an English garden, and I think every year she takes over more of her grass area out there. I think pretty soon it's going to all be filled in, because she's been nominated before, but she just wasn't selected. Because when we only pick two a month, it's, you know, it's hard to get everybody that you'd like. But anyway, so she has a really nice eye-catching yard there. And that's all for this month. We hope to have a Cone Flower Award. We've got a couple of nominations that we'll be selecting there. And on Thursday, August 16th, we will be riding along around for the Block Awards, and we already have a couple of nominations, but we'd like to have more. If somebody has any, they can call Roseanne at the Yard, and she'll pass that along to us. And so we're going to ride around that night and select the Block Award. Everybody gets a nice sign at the end of their street that stays there forever, and everybody will know that you won a Block Award, and so that'll be nice, and we hope we'll get some more nominations for that. And Byron Fatidis asked me to mention that they still have compost at Gary Park at the far end for people to pick up. When the DPW is closed, they can go to the park and get that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Peggy. It's been a tough year for gardening without a lot of rain, but there's still some really beautiful gardens out there. Thank you. Our next presentation is by the Downtown Development Authority, and I, oh, we get a new presenter this evening. Well, new-new, but.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and everyone. I'm Cindy Wilcock from the DDA, and I'm actually not presenting tonight. I'm just here to introduce one of our great volunteers, Mary Frances Kilcoin, who's going to tell you about something cool and new that we're doing at the DDA.
Awesome. Mary, welcome.
Hi, everyone. Yeah, I am Mary Frances Kilcoin, and I'm happy to be here tonight to tell you about our cool, new contest that everyone can win, where everyone's a winner. So the DDA has decided it's time to ask the question that's been on everyone's mind. How do you do downtown Ferndale? Put your answer on video, and you'll receive our new, super cool, new-designed, iHeart Ferndale bumper sticker. Entering is, whoops, entering a video is the only way you can win one of these special little bumper stickers. And it was designed for the DDA by local artist Wagner Whitehouse. And so if you enter, you shall receive. The videos are just like 30 seconds to a minute. We suggest, you know, you can be riding your bike in downtown Ferndale, you can be shopping, you can be eating at a local restaurant. And what you'll do is just pull out your smartphone, say, "This is how I do downtown Ferndale," and submit it online at info@downtownferndale.com, and then that's when you'll receive your We did want to show a few videos because we've already had some people enter, and unfortunately, we don't have that tonight.
Oh.
But we do have, I don't know where we are or where they are, we do have an opportunity for the City Council and everyone here tonight to earn a sticker. What we thought we'd do is get everyone together and say, "This is how we do downtown Ferndale." We do downtown Ferndale. Would you guys like to participate? Come on.
I see hands raised.
We've got a video camera right here.
And now, so, what do you want us to do?
I don't know. Maybe if you guys-
All of us.
How will it work? Why not?
It's easy, and you get to get one of these.
You just say-
I'll do anything for a free sticker then.
Right.
Come on. If you can't show a video, you have to make a video. That's all.
So you made one up there, Cindy. Come on, Jeannie. Oh, you don't have the choice on your body. This is how we downtown Ferndale. This is how we downtown Ferndale. Yes. This is the easiest way to get it. We're coming up. Wait, wait.
Come on, Lynn. You sure you're going to write?
All right, I'm probably, "This is how I downtown Ferndale."
Okay, now, one, two, three. This is how I downtown Ferndale. Woo-woo. That was great, you'll see it online. Wait a minute, so we can hand out the bumper stickers to the council? Oh, yes, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to, so if you can come to the office, we'll get you a sticker. And Mary, do I want to finish it up? That's your telephone habits to the winning video?
Oh, yes.
I just haven't taken it, but, um.
So we will be collecting these videos, and we do have, we're going to post them online eventually so that everyone can vote for the best video of doing downtown Ferndale, and then they're going to get a prize package, Ferndale prize package. So, thank you.
Thank you. That was very fun. Appreciate it. Our third presentation is our county commissioner, Craig Covey, is here this evening. Welcome, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, DDA. You know, I've been to some of the other City's Council meetings, and we have the most fun here at these meetings. And I do want to compliment you. I was up at the county last week, and one of the folks from the Development Department was just praising the city again from the Main Street group, and he said, "Oh, Craig, we're so proud of you guys, you got 100% occupancy." I told him I didn't think it was 100%, but it's probably around 98%. But with the opening of the new yogurt store, and there's a new music store that opened just last night or the night before, just, we should be very proud, and we are obviously very proud. Real quick, from the County Commission, this is budget time, they're working on the budget again. You may have seen that Mr. Brooks Patterson was touting his budget acumen. It's balanced for the next three years and even beyond that. I did criticize the budget in the, to the extent that we have the largest funds balance in history. And while it's great to, you know, to always be in the black, they have a funds balance this year of 46%. Normally, a government entity has a funds balance suggested between 15% to 20%. So I guess he's really saving for a whole lot more rainy days. But in any case, that's up. And then also, really neat news, finally, Oakland County Commission meetings are going to be webcast, and you might think, well, it took them a long time, and it did. When I got there two years ago, they were still working on it, and I'll tell you, a lot of folks worked on it, particularly the Democratic members, but Gary McGilvery, who is the Democratic County Commissioner from Madison Heights, really spearheaded it and put a lot of time and effort. So if you, you know, after you watch the Ferndale City Council meetings and you watch all the debates and all that, and you still want to watch some more public government access, you can go to oakgov.com, you click on the County Commission, and there'll be prompts to allow you to watch, and you'll see what we get to do up there. Boring sometimes, sometimes interesting. I did want to mention also, of course, that DIA Millage is coming on August 7th, and also Smart Renewal, two very important reasons to make sure that you vote on Tuesday. But I mainly here was asked by the committee to promote the 16th Annual Ferndale Pub Crawl. It's amazing, we've been doing this for 16 years. This is a great event that draws thousands of people from all across the metro area and even other states, and usually there's one or two people from other countries that come. But the annual pub crawl, again, traditionally begins at Boogie Fever, 6:30 the doors will open, people can register up until 9:00 PM, and then we're also going to allow people to register throughout the evening out on Woodward and at the various clubs. Tradition is big with the crawl, and the mayor is always asked to send off the first few groups. Mayor Coulter will be the fourth mayor who's done that now, going back to Mayor Geddard. It's a great way to promote the businesses, as the DDA knows, lots of restaurants, lots of pubs involved. This year, 22, so it's an all-time high, and you'll have to hustle if you want to try to visit all 22. We suggest you have a glass of water, or just run in and run back out. No motorized vehicles permitted at all in any shape, way, or form during the crawl. And in all the 16 years we've done this, we have not had a single problem, and we thank the Ferndale Police Department as well as the Auxiliary. We have raised, we figured out that in the last 16 years, we've raised in excess of $150,000 for a wide variety of charities, and this year, there are four charities benefiting from the crawl. So when you pay the $10, you know, not only does that get you on the crawl and it gets you in all the clubs, including the ones that might have a cover charge, but more importantly, as it goes to these following charities, Fern Care, the Ferndale Community Foundation, the Michigan AIDS Coalition, and the Ferndale Auxiliary Police. So again, I know, Mayor, you're coming, and I know that Councilman Martin is coming, Councilman Lennon is coming, I'm hoping that Councilman Galloway, Councilwoman Piana, you're going to try, or you're out of town, aren't you?
I have a prior commitment.
That's right. Well, we appreciate you coming in all the other years, and so appreciate it a lot. The last thing I want to share, if I may, and that is that this is the last council meeting before the election, I just do want to encourage people to vote. I understand from our city clerk that it appears that we're going to have one of the lowest voter turnouts ever, and that's just very unfortunate. So I just remind people, Tuesday, August 7th, you can still vote absentee if you wish. The polls are open for 13 hours, and so there is really, and it's summertime, so you can't blame it on the snow or anything else. But regardless of your party, whether you're Republican, a Democrat, an Independent, whether there's a certain candidate you like or you don't like, remember that there's elections for judge, our own city attorney is on the ballot. So please get out and vote, do your Democratic, show the rights that we have and practice. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good to see you. All right, that concludes our presentations this evening. Next would be call the audience. Call the audience, of course, is 30 minutes now, more time if needed, at the end of the meeting if we need it, three minutes to speak about anything that's not on the agenda. You could speak to that when we get to that portion of the agenda. Please give us your name and your address, or write it on the back signup sheet for our clerk. Dennis?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Dennis Hepner. I live at 766 Flawed Hill in Ferndale. Now, here I am again, asking the registered voters of Ferndale to go to the polls on August 7th and vote for the candidate of their choice. This is a privilege that some people in other countries don't have. People complain about our government and the way it's run. The first thing I ask them is, "Did you vote in the last election?" And moreover, if they're not, they will say, "No, I did not vote." And so I say to them, "You have nothing to complain about. You give up that right because you did not vote." Because the way the districts have been changed by the Republican Party, we have Democrats running against Democrats. Your vote will decide who will be on the ballot in November. In the last election, only 14% of registered voters cast their vote. Don't give up your rights by not voting. Every vote counts. Make yours one of them. Thank you.
Well said, sir. Well said. Anyone else like to address Council this evening?
Good evening. My name is Gary Darren. I live at 477 West Troy. And the reason why I'm down here tonight was to have the Council consider maybe not having people ride their bikes from like maybe Allen to Woodward. Just by way of a quick preface, I will keep it under three minutes. In May, I fell and had a compression fracture in my back. It was repaired on July the 6th. This past Monday, I was downtown at Dollar Castle, walked out the door, there's a bicycle coming at me, a guy probably about 20, real fast, and he wasn't like on the opposite side by the meters, he was right along the doorways. I just went backwards as fast I could, backpedaling, fell again, and I had to have redamaged that. I'm in terrific pain, so I'm seeing my doctor tomorrow, but I was just thinking, you know, with as many people that are walking and young children, that maybe just that stretch right there on this side of Nine Mile Road, it's more wide open, but with all those stores right there, it's, you know, it can be very dangerous, and like I said, you know, my back's re-injured. And that's it. And I just wanted to say one other thing. I don't know what etiquette there is as far as staying for the end of the meeting, but I have to leave because, I mean, it hurts.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks for being, sorry to hear about your back, sir. Thanks for your comments.
Jeannie Davis, President of Ferndale Seniors, and I've already got my bumper sticker. I just want to remind the Council and the Clerk and April, and Dan, and Cheryl, that this Wednesday, the 25th, is the seniors' potluck, and you're all invited. You don't have to bring anything. Everybody else who comes has to bring something, but you know, we seniors are really good cooks, so you're going to have, Dan, I know Dan Martin's asked me three times to confirm the date, and so has Craig. And also-
What was the time, Jeannie? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, 11 o'clock.
11 o'clock.
At the Kulik Center. Yeah, the meeting starts at 11, and I usually have a few announcements, but there's only two potlucks a year, and on those days, I don't say much, or else the ladies would just stone me. Get down and let us eat. So, and also, what I want to announce, that in August, the seniors are getting culture at both of our meetings. We have docents coming from the DIA, and on the 8th, which is the second Wednesday of August, we have a docent coming to talk about the Spanish masterpieces, which is one of the current exhibits at the DIA, and talk about them and explain them. And then on the 22nd, which is the fourth Wednesday of the month, we will be having a docent who's coming to talk about the inside-out program that's on around town, and she'll be explaining about some of the pictures and the paintings that are there. As always, admission is free, and as always, anyone's welcome to come. Meeting starts at 11, and I will be making hardly any announcements because I want to hear the ladies talk as well. And they'll be, they'll be having like, what do you call that, PowerPoint with slides? So it should be interesting. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeannie. Good evening.
Good evening. Dave Cottrell, 1610 Oakfield, and Sherry Wells, talking about the Sierra Club Green Cruise, which will be Saturday, August 11th. Well, the 8th Annual Sierra Club Green Cruise is presented by the Southeast Michigan Group of the Sierra Club. This year's organizers are Tom Delsky of Huntingdon Woods, Terry Haspecker, a member of the City Warren's Environmental Commission, Sherry Wells, and myself, Dave Cottrell. The Green Cruise will have a 8:00 AM 40-mile bicycle ride to Belle Isle, a 9:00 AM 22-mile ride to Birmingham, and a 2:00 PM 4-mile family ride in Ferndale. The Green Alley activities will be from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, including children's crafts and climbing tower, free food and beverages. The parade will be at 12:00 noon. We'd really like people celebrating, decorating their bicycles, wearing silly hats, maybe in this weather, splashing the water, friends with water would be a good idea. And one of the great advantages of having the parade in Ferndale is all the volunteers. We could still use a few for help set up tents, staff the information booth, or help distribute the free food. Our Ferndale sponsors are Greenleaf Bodywork, providing free back massages, Western Market, providing its unique self that always pleasantly surprises us, New York Bagel, KLM Bicycle Store, which will provide the bicycle corral where you can park your bicycle, so we can, you know, take care of 70 bicycles or a really good number of them. Ferndale Bike Shop, Woodward Avenue Breweries is another sponsor, Oakland County Parks is providing the kids' climbing tower, and Galloway and Collins Real Estate Law Firm is also helping out. So, and also, of course, the Southeast Michigan Group of the Sierra Club. So Green Cruise is being three weeks, on Saturday, August 11th. I hope to see lots of people here. It's always fun, and it's a great way to participate.
And you mentioned you need volunteers, so how would people go about doing that?
Well, you can contact me, Dave Cottrell.
Where would they contact you?
I can give my phone number, which I don't want to avoid, but, you know.
I'm trying to help you.
Yeah, 248-635-8152.
Only use that if you want to volunteer.
Yes, yes, and that's his cell phone, so it'll be switched to voicemail while he's at work. I put on a lot of helmets through the Rotary, at the Bike Rotary, dozens of kids' helmets on their heads, and I want to see all my kids show up for our parade on Saturday, August 11. Every helmeted head that I helped Rotary provide. So grandmas and moms and dads, bring them all.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, you guys. Always a great event, every year. Chris?
I'm actually back again, sorry. Chris Hughes from the Ferndale DDA. We wanted to add a little something to the DIA information, which is this Sunday, July 28th, there's going to be a four-city tour of the masterpieces that are installed in Ferndale, Royal Oak, Claussen, and Troy, and we are organizing a little bike ride from here to visit those other locations. You will see the details of that at Downtown Ferndale Facebook page, and it will also be on our website tomorrow. But it's a four-city tour. We have six great masterpieces in town that everybody can see at any time of the day. They're at different buildings around town. There's a map at downtownferndale.com to see that. Also, one more thing to put on your calendar about the DIA is that on August 26th, it's Free Day for Ferndale residents, so everybody can go down, enjoy the museum, see all the great exhibits down there, and have a great time. But in the meantime, enjoy what we've got in downtown Ferndale. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else for call the audience this evening? Seeing none, I will move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda are items that we consider routine, and we enact in one motion unless Council wants to adjust the consent agenda. So let me go ahead and read the consent agenda this evening. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting and special meetings held July 9th, 2012. B is approval to post and recruit for the position of police dispatcher. C is approval to conduct the recruitment process for the position of police service aide. D is approval of contract with Georgie Concrete LLC at 20450 Sherwood in Detroit to replace sidewalk and handicap ramps under the 2012 program. And E, approval of the bills and payrolls submitted by the City Manager's Office, subject to the Review of the Council Finance Committee. What is Council's pleasure on the consent agenda?
I would move that we adopt the consent agenda in its entirety.
Support.
Moved by Galloway, supported by Piana. Is there any discussion either from the audience, or first, or from Council? Otherwise, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Piana-
Yes.
Galloway-
Yes.
Mayor Coulter-
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. This is one of those rare evenings when there are no regular agenda items, so I'm going to, I saw someone applauding that. So I'm going to move to call the Council, and I see our police chief here this evening. Anything for the good of the city this evening, Chief?
Do you have one thing that I'd like to let the citizens know, that we had an incident today at, actually, it didn't occur today, it became known today at Credit Union One during the Pig and Whiskey event. Some individuals had put a device in the ATM machine at Credit Union One along with a camera, at which time individuals that came in to use the ATM machine had their cards swiped and the information taken off of their, off the back of their card, and they were also videotaped with putting their PIN number into the machine. So far, we've had 240-some-odd instances of folks that they're, including two police officers from Ferndale, whose accounts have been attacked and money has been removed, upwards of $1,200 and $1,400 in our two cases, our two officers' cases. This is really, many of these cases occurred in Waterford. Really, alls we had was the tampering situation, as far as we know. Most of these cases happened at some where they actually used the device, or the card, rather, were at Waterford and some other places around the metro Detroit area. The thing I wanted to warn Ferndale residents and visitors that were here during the Pig and Whiskey, that was only there for seven hours. We have it on video, and we're working with the Secret Service to solve this crime, but I wanted to warn the residents that if at any time that they use an ATM, particularly at a bank, and the card does not slide in like it normally does very easily, and it takes, if you have to force the card in in any way, this is a very small device, it sits on the exterior of the opening for your debit card or your credit card, and it reads it as it goes in. So it's not very thick, but it does inhibit the card being put into the slot. So that's, we just want to put a warning out, and also, anybody that was here during the Pig and Whiskey, you might want to check your account to make sure that you have not been a victim of this particular crime. This is also something that's been going around the metro Detroit area for the last several months. This is the first time it's happened here, so, but we are working with the federal government agencies that have some jurisdiction here that can assist us.
Thanks, Chief. Good information to know. Appreciate it.
Is this something that's noticeably visible?
You would, it is noticeably visible if you're looking for it. This one that we saw was just a small, black device that went over to the opening, and it was only, it only stuck out from the machine itself by less than a quarter of an inch, but it does inhibit the card going in. No, it does not. It makes you actually push the card in, so it was obvious that you had to do something different in order to get the card in. But all that is, is that there's a small little device in there that's reading your magnetic strip on the back of your card.
Do you have the hand that's putting the number, the PIN numbers in?
And that is another thing that you can do, is that you can-
If you, I hate, but if you're speaking into the mic, then the folks at home can hear this great advice.
ATMs, if you've noticed, it's kind of hard to do, but there's a reason for it, is that they put a shroud over the top of you where you type your numbers in. But Ms. Wells is actually right, is that if you do not have that device on the ATM that you're using, as you can put your hand over. It's pretty slick what they did. They actually super glued a light bar across the top of the ATM that had a pinhole camera in it that was reading straight down, and that's how they, that's how they read the number- the numbers that you were punching in for your PIN number. So very interesting, very sophisticated group. The groups that are actually doing the deed are probably the low end of the individuals doing this, but they're working for something, some group that has been doing this for some time, and it happens to be the metro Detroit area's turn right now. This is a nationally syndicated-type thing, so they get more of the new people into their little organizations to do the actual dirty work. And, but, we're just learning, we ourselves are learning a lot about this one. We haven't seen this little scam before, but it's new to us, but it's not new to the Secret Service.
And I suppose whether you get reimbursed is depending on your financial institution, right?
True, but typically, the Credit Union One sure is making good on this. Comerica, I understand, was the victim of this earlier in the month, and to the tune of almost a quarter of a million dollars. So they work very fast, very quickly, and they, so they know what they're doing. And they have caught several of them, but like I say, that's how we know that they are the, the low-level criminals are the ones that are being caught using the fake credit cards and PIN number at the ATMs.
Thank you, Chief. Hi, Chief Sullivan. Anything for the good of the city this evening?
Mayor, counsel, there was a heat warning today from the Oakland County Health Department. As everyone knows, it's pretty warm out, and I just recommend that everyone hydrate regularly. And if you're elderly or super young and have any kind of health problems, stay out of the heat, stay in air conditioning or shade. We've had some heat-related illnesses. We've been kind of running pretty hard and heavy for the last three or four days. So just everyone should be aware of that. And fluid intake typically drops off, even though people think they're drinking enough, they're not quite keeping up to par. So you lose fluid through sweat, and through stress, and through breathing. So when you're drinking in fluid, you need to take in three times the amount you lost. So if you lost a liter of fluid, you need to bring in three liters to replace that one liter. So I just recommend everyone stay on top of that, because that keeps us away from collapsing or having serious health problems.
Good advice, Chief. And I would remind people, even if we don't declare, you know, an emergency or a cooling center operation, you're always still invited to come to the Kulik Center or the library during normal business hours and cool off, especially seniors and young people. I'd encourage you to take advantage of that. Our city clerk, Sherilyn?
Of course, I have things. We have an election two weeks from tomorrow.
Yes, we do.
The public is invited to attend the testing of our vote tabulators this Thursday at 6:00 on the lower level here at City Hall. It's a great opportunity to gain an understanding of how our machines are programmed for accuracy. I'm also opening our precinct worker training to the public, again, because it's a great opportunity to learn about how Michigan's voting process works, and about the checks and balances in place to ensure fair elections. We are hosting three sessions on Friday, August 8th, one from 8:30 to 10:30, one from 11:00 to 1:00, and the last one from 2:00 to 4:00. Please feel free to come. Also, I want to let you know that sample ballots and information on obtaining absent voter ballots are available online at www.ferndale-mi.com. And to echo Commissioner Covey and Mr. Hepner, please exercise your right to vote on August 7th.
Thank you. City manager, April Lynch, excuse me.
I answered both still.
Good.
Actually, you stole my thunder on the announcement. I just do want to remind everybody to know that Monday through Thursday, the Kulik Center is open from 9:30 to 8:00 PM. At any time in the heat, they can come and just, we have a separate room that allows people to just chill out, play on their computer, read a book, whatever they need to cool down. And then we're working through, too, as well, on certain days that maybe staying open later, or especially on Sundays if that's excessive heat, establishing cooling center policy and procedure as well, so that will be coming very shortly. But until then, please note that that is always available for use, especially in this heat. So if you see a neighbor as well, please make sure that if they're elderly, especially, that they get an opportunity to go to the Kulik Center, they don't have air condition as well. That's all I have.
Thank you. City attorney, Dan Christ.
I would just echo Sherilyn's comment, and encourage everybody to vote on August 7th.
Thank you. Councilwoman Piana?
Yeah, I wasn't going to say anything, but we had someone come up during call of audience, Mr. Dearan came to talk about biking on sidewalks. And I wanted to let you know that biking on sidewalks is not the preferred place to bike, it is the street. We learned this, the city did, during the DDA's M. Training Wheels event, which they applied for a grant, and they secured it, and brought in professionals to train. City manager, me, and the police chief, and a couple others from the city about what we need to do to improve our road infrastructure to accommodate cyclists and pedestrians more safely. And I think, for me, as a cyclist, I typically ride on the sidewalk because I feel safer. And we're in transition of making sure our roads are safer for these cyclists, but we're in that planning stages, and we're trying to figure out how to make that happen. So I understand the concerns of Mr. Dearan on cyclists, because it is, causes pedestrian and cycling crashes, but yet, at the same time, people don't feel comfortable riding their bikes on Nine Mile, let alone Woodward. So we're working on it.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Galloway?
Just to echo a couple things that have already been said. I am a cyclist as well. I commute to work on my bike quite a bit, and I choose to ride in the streets. But if you're going to ride in the streets, ride with traffic rather than against it. Just coming over here this evening, someone was riding against traffic. I wasn't looking for him, when I turned left, and, you know, I didn't hit anybody, but you want to go ride where you're most visible, and that's always going to be on the right side with traffic as far over to the right as you can get. On August 7th, we have a primary, and just a couple points. When we had a big vote here on the Headley override a couple years back, a citizen, a well-meaning citizen, I think, demanded a recount on that, and he didn't have any idea what the process was for certifying our machines, was very concerned about fraud, or how somehow that the numbers didn't get counted right. And when interviewed in the paper, he said he didn't really appreciate how extensive the efforts were to make sure that we got a good vote, that your vote counted. And so any citizens who have concerns about our new voting machines or the process should take our city clerk up on our offer. The process is extremely transparent. You can watch really just about every part of it if you have the time and inclination. So, you know, while I think perhaps there's other jurisdictions that aren't as transparent or as well-run, our city clerk is an expert on Michigan election law, and does an extremely good job for us. But if you want to check everything out for yourself, she's made that available to you. August 7th, the primary, a lot of folks, I think, may be considering not voting, assuming that the big race for the presidential is already over, and there's no need to get out and make your voice heard. I would encourage, I would say that there's at least two good reasons to go out and vote on August 7th. The first is the small millage for the DIA. Keith Crane had a great opinion. I don't always agree with him, rarely agree with him. But his point was that without a world-class arts and cultural institutions in a city, we can't ever be a world-class. So transit's great, you know, doing all these things that we have in Ferndale is good, but without an art museum like the DIA, I don't think Detroit's ever going to be thought of in the same breath as New York, Chicago, and Los Angeles. It's a small commitment, and I encourage people to educate themselves on that and vote. And then finally, a lot of folks just vote the top of the ticket. I encourage people to go all the way down, look at the judicial candidates. Our very own Dan Christ is running. He has a bit of a unique perspective from some of the other candidates, having worked with cities, having prosecuted crimes in our district court, a little bit different than your sort of run-of-the-mill Oakland County prosecutors who are running. So check that out. Hold August 7th.
Very good. Let me just reiterate that this Friday is the pub crawl. I will be there as the mayor, sending off the first groups. It's a wonderful event that has grown over the years to raise a lot of money for charity. I hope people come out 6:30 at Boogie Fever, and it would be wonderful. The Mayor's Business Council, something that I announced in my State of the City, is going to have its first meeting a week from Thursday. I'm very excited about it. A lot of our large commercial and industrial business owners have agreed to participate in that, and we expect to develop a plan in the city to help attract and retain more of those large industrial and commercial businesses. And we're going to have our first meeting a week from Thursday, so I'll report on that next time. Finally, please exercise your democratic right. Dennis, I couldn't have said it any better than you, but in Ferndale in particular, we have a couple of longtime associated people here, the county commissioner, and of course, our longtime city attorney is on the ballot. So lots of reasons for people to vote in addition to the DIA millage, so please exercise your rights of democracy. And with that, our meeting is adjourned.